All right, welcome everyone to this session who is entitled "New in the Economic Journal." So that session has been put together by the managing editors of the Economic Journal and I am myself Fran Portier, one of the managing editors. Editor, so we will have four papers in that session, two papers on monetary policy, two papers on monetary policy and then two papers on, you know, that we call like culture and conflicts. So I suggest that we start with the first batch of two papers on monetary policy. So we'll have, you can ask questions on the Q and A. And after the two first papers, we'll have a five minute time for a period for Q and As. So I give the floor to the first speaker, Timo Haber from University of Cambridge.
Thank you very much, Frank. Thank you very much to the organizers and of course to the editors for including the paper. My name is Timo Haber, I'm a PhD student at Cambridge. Let me just share my slides and then we're good to go. You can all see that? Perfect, okay. So this is a joint paper with Guido Ascardi, who's at the University of Fabia and the Nederlanger Bank. And so the views that are expressed here are those of us and not necessarily the ones of the Nederlanger Bank or the Eurosystem. And this paper is actually in its essence quite simple. It's literally a test of a key assumption behind the new Keynesian models. New Keynesian models are used to generally generate real effects of monetary policy in these models. And what we most need for that are sticky prices. So there are generally two ways of modeling price changes or infrequent price changes. First are what the literature calls time-dependent models. These are the most prominent of them is, for example, the Calvo model, where really the time between price adjustments between two periods determines the hazard rate of adjustment. So the Calvo fairy in the Calvo model visits you randomly and that is only a function of time. How likely you haven't had to change your price for X periods of time. On the other side of the spectrum are state-dependent models, where firms face adjustment costs for changing prices. They can change prices every period, but that makes the price changes occur when they reach a critical level and that's endogenously determined. And in this paper, we just want to understand, first of all, okay, can we see the new Keynesian mechanism in the aggregate data? And what of these two assumptions holds true in the aggregate data? Do we find some evidence of state-dependent pricing also in aggregate data? So the general gist of this is, okay, if you believe that there are nominal rigidities that are state-dependent, then two central predictions should emerge out of the data that we're going to test. The first one being that the impulse response function of inflation and output to a monetary policy shock should actually depend on the size of that shock. So why is that? Think about a state-dependent pricer that faces, looks at the state of the economy and faces an adjustment cost of changing prices. If that shock is very large, then that that state of the economy has changed by quite a bit and they're more likely to change their price compared to a small monetary policy shock. So here we should really see a lot of firms adjusting their prices because they've seen a large shock compared to a small shock. On the other side, if you think about the old time-dependent pricing model, there it's independent of the size of the shock. The Calvo fairy visits you randomly. Whether you change prices or not depends only on that probability and doesn't change on, is not a function of the state of the economy. So we would expect that the economy should exhibit a more price flexible response after large monetary policy shocks. And there is already literature that confirms this in a theoretical way. We really want to go into the empirics. The second, the second implication that we're thinking about or the second test that we want to do relates to the level of trend inflation. So again, if you think about a high inflation in your economy, then the relative prices of firms get eroded much quicker than in a, in a, in an economy with a low level of trend inflation. And so we would expect that in a state-dependent world, firms are more likely to adjust their price. So the frequency of price adjustments is higher. And therefore you should also after a monetary policy shock in that regime, see a more price flexible response, meaning what do you, do I mean here with price flexible response? Well, first of all, the price, price level, or in our case, the inflation adjusts more quickly and more strongly early in, after the monetary policy shock. And secondly, we will have weaker output response. Because at the end of the day, a stronger price response will elicit a weaker output response. Think about this in your standard ASAD framework with a steeper AS curve. That, that's literally what we're doing here, okay? So what is our contribution here? In this paper, we propose a simple and minimal test of two predictions on US aggregate data using smooth local projections. And we find some statistical, statistically significant evidence that first of all, relating to our first test, large monetary shocks have greater effect on prices at small horizons, exactly what we would expect if there's some level of state dependency in aggregate data and are less persistent. And secondly, the impulse responses in a high trend inflation regime are also more price flexible compared to a, to a low trend inflation regime. Let me just quickly talk a bit about the literature, where we fit in here. And I, there's quite a large chunk of literature already on the NK theory. I think we all, we are all very aware of that. The paper that's closest to us in that respect is Alvarez, Sleepy and Passadore, who really work out this, this understanding of the, of the function of the size of the shock in theoretical state-dependent models and compare that with time-dependent models. On the evidence side, there are quite a few papers that look at how micro evidence shows that there is state-dependent pricing. And that really is quite a large literature where we look at micro evidence. Where we really fit in is that we say, okay, hang on. We have all this micro evidence on state-dependent pricing, what about aggregate evidence? And that's really our, our big contribution here. And then finally, we're using local projections. And there, we're using local projections with a smooth transition function to test, for example, in high and low inflation regimes. Quite similarly to that, Tenier and Thwaites have done the same with monetary policy in recession and booms. And the other paper that I would like to point out is Barney Chon and Brownlee's, which show that you can actually come up with smooth local projections to make the impulse response function a bit smoother. And that's a technique that we use in this paper. I won't have time to get into this today, but if you, if you are interested, read their paper and of course maybe read our paper as well to see how we applied it in this case. And so let me get right into it. This is a purely empirical project, so the data is also relatively quickly told. It's, it's a monthly sample that runs from 1969 to 2007, just before the great financial crisis. We exclude that because of the traditional reasons of zero lower bound, et cetera, et cetera. And the shocks that we use are the Roman Roma shocks extended up until 2007. And the response variables that we really look at are the classic three equation, the R response variables, PC inflation, industrial production and the federal funds rate. Again, because of time, I'm only going to show you inflation and output today. However, if you're interested again, you can look and check out how the results also come out for the federal funds rate. Just to say, they are, they're not in any way against the central predictions that we already make here with only inflation and output. So let me go into the first implication, the number one test, remember, large versus small shocks. So we test for size dependence here using the following local projection. So let me walk you through this in detail. So we have on the left-hand side, the response variable up to horizon H. On the right-hand side, a constant, a time trend. Then we have the linear interaction with the, with the shock, classic, classic local projection. And then what we do is we interact the shock again with its absolute value. And really that, that Zeta here, that really captures size dependence. How can you see that? Well, the best way to see this is actually looking at the impulse response function of a variable Y at horizon H after shock delta. So that's this, this function here. Well, that's first of all, just a linear interaction term times the size of the shock. And then secondly, of course, that Zeta times the shock and its absolute value. And this Zeta really says, okay, if the interaction coefficient has the same sign as the linear coefficient, then the size effect amplifies in the exact same direction as the linear effect. I think this is, this is quite, quite clear. On the other hand, if it has opposite signs, so if, let's say, this beta here is positive and the Zeta is negative, then we have a counteracting effect and possibly an overturning of the linear effect into its normal direction. And that's exactly what we're going to exploit and then we're going to look at to, to, to show this now with respect to our first, with our, with respect to our first test. Let me just say what we would expect is if there is size dependence in this world, we would expect this, this Zeta here to be possibly negative at early horizons and then possibly positive at a later horizon for prices. And that's exactly what we, what we see here. So in black, I'm showing you the linear coefficient for the impulse response function. Now it has kind of the standard interpretation of, okay, prices are a bit, a bit persistent and only drop after like about a year when you just look at the linear coefficient. But remember, that's not the full impulse response function. There is here the other effect, this size effect. And here we can see that this is actually counteracting this effect at early horizons and at late horizons, possibly overturning it, right? So you can imagine that a large enough shock here can actually tilt this total impulse response function, I'm going to show you that in a second, into negative territory and make it weaker at later horizons. Similarly, in terms of industrial production, we, we see this kind of standard result that output drops eventually if you just look at linear. But if you start looking at a size dependency here as well, you actually see that this can again be overturned and possibly move output forward and, and make the total output response a bit weaker. Again, what you would expect if you have price flexibility. So let me show you this in terms of impulse response functions. So here I'm simulating three different sizes of shocks, right? So in blue, you see a 25 basis point monetary policy shock. And that has the relatively standard interpretation that you have a bit of a price puzzle at the beginning and eventually prices fall. If you think about 100 basis point shock, that is weaker. That's kind of the standard thing that we look at if you just do a linear impulse response. And then finally you have in green, a, a 200 basis point shock. And here you can see that prices are indeed much more flexible as they start dropping already in like month four or five compared to something like month 12, when you look at a 25 basis point shock. And the total response is also a bit less persistent than in blue. And on the other side, remember this ASAD logic, you also see that a small shock has a relative, these are standardized, relatively larger effect compared to a, a, a large shock that has a weaker output effect. Exactly what you would expect if there's some degree of state-dependent pricing in, in your aggregate data. So that's with respect to the first, the first implication, the first test. Yes, we find, as you can see here, we find some evidence of state-dependent pricing when it comes to large monetary policy shock. What about the second implication with respect to a high trend inflation? In order to do this, we, we leverage on a few papers that, that are before, I've already mentioned Tenier and Thwaites, but there are others such as Albach and Gorinmchenko and do a smooth transition local projection. The easiest way to think about this is literally put an indicator that's one for high inflation and put an indicator that's zero for low inflation. Of course, you want to be a bit more careful about how to select these inflation samples. So let me walk you again through this, through this local projection. Left-hand side, response variable output or inflation. Right-hand side, time trend. Then this smooth transition function, which I'll get to in, in the end, in a second. Again, think about this as your indicator. And then we have the, just a constant times the, times the shock and a few controls. And on the other hand, you have an indicator or a smooth transition function that is the opposite of that. So what, what's this smooth transition function? It basically uses a 24-month centered moving average of the PC inflation to capture something like trend inflation in a, in an easy way. We have quite a few robustnesses in the tests in, in the paper that does that more sophisticated as well. And we calibrate C and gamma so that about 30% of the sample between 69 and 2007 is classified as high inflation. Think about this really as, okay, the great inflation time is classified as high inflation, obviously. And the great moderation time is classified as low inflation. And what we're interested in is again, understanding how these betas behave. If they are now capturing the full impulse response functions and we're looking for regime dependency here again. Again, we would expect something like early, we have a quick fall in prices for a high inflation regime versus a persistent and lower response later for low inflation regimes. Okay, so let me just walk you through the picture here. So let's first focus on inflation on the top. On the, in the first, in the top left, I am plotting the the point estimates for three different impulse response functions. First, in black is the standard non-regime dependent impulse response function. In blue, we see the low inflation impulse response function of inflation. And in green, you see the high inflation impulse response function. And blue and, and green are again depicted with the confidence intervals in, in the next two columns. And then finally, I'm showing you the, the T statistic, whether these two impulse response functions, so green and blue, whether they are statistically significant from each other. And here confirming again what we've already seen with respect to large and small shocks, here we again see that in high inflation regimes, you have a much quicker reaction of inflation as you would expect if more firms keep on adjusting their prices versus a world with low inflation where firms are less, a bit more reluctant to, to adjust prices right away, right? And this is statistically significant at the early horizon and at the late horizons, kind of what you would expect. In terms of industrial production, this is one qualification we have in this paper is we do not find a statistically significant effect here, right? What you would expect here is a weaker output response of in a high inflation regime compared to a low inflation regime. That is qualitatively what we find, however, that is not statistically significant. And that's, that's one, one important qualification that we need to make. These are the main messages of the paper. Let me, let me just wrap up here and, and hand it back to Frank and the next presenter. So in this, in this paper, we, we aim to test two central predictions of the new Keynesian world with state-dependent pricing in aggregate data. This, you have large shocks and high versus low inflation. And we use nonlinear and smooth local projections and find that both large shocks and shocks during high inflation regimes elicit a more price flexible response. And we interpret that as statistically significant evidence of state-dependent prices in the aggregate. And let me just make some advertisement before, before I'm going to conclude. There is more in the paper. So we do a battery of robustness tests that hopefully convince you that this is, this is indeed true and, and, and correct. And again, I already said that the smoothing procedure, for example, from Barney Chon and Brownlee's is also detailed in the paper. And based on this work, the outlook here is now to do a bit more research into diving a bit deeper into, for example, production networks and understanding how state and time-dependent prices work in, in these, in these worlds. Thank you again for the editor, for the referees and yeah, thanks for listening.
Thanks a lot, Timo, perfectly on time. So I suggest that without further ado, we move to Amit Doura from Wake Forest University that will present the second paper of the session. Amit?
Yeah. Yeah, thanks again for the organizers for including our paper. This is joint work with Michael Bauer and Philippe Muller. So as the title says in this paper, we're interested in uncertainty about monetary policy. And so to motivate this, let me just show you this particular feature, which is an article that comes out in the Wall Street Journal every time there's an FOMC meeting. And what they do is they look at the statement and they highlight any changes that have been made in the statement from the previous statement. So the things in green that you see are new things that have been added to the statement and the things in red are the ones they've, they've removed. And you know, you don't need to read the whole statement here, I just want to highlight this one particular word where the FOMC carefully selected to replace the word expect with judges. And you, you might think that that wouldn't matter much, but, but as the Fed followers know, there's a lot of attention paid to even small little things that the FOMC changes. So as an example, from the same day, then here's a tweet. And there are many other examples of this, which specifically focuses on that particular change. So it says that the Fed statement twice used the verb judges rather than expects. And they conclude that this means that there's less certainty about future plans of the FOMC. Okay, so, so we all know that there's a lot of interest in kind of where the path of interest rates is going. But this is kind of an anecdotal example of a lot of interest in uncertainty around that path. Right? How certain is, is the signal coming from the Fed about what they're going to do to interest rates? So what we want to do in this paper is try to rigorously quantify this idea that, you know, how much uncertainty is there about future monetary policy decisions? And what effect, if any at all, they have for monetary transmission? So that's kind of the big goal in this paper. And we're trying to contribute to this literature that uses high frequency data. Essentially, the idea is that you look at financial market prices just before and just after the FOMC announcement. And, and then the idea is that within that short window, you attribute changes in financial prices to what the FOMC said or what the FOMC did. Okay, and clearly there's a large literature starting with the work of Kutnam. But a lot of these papers, in fact, most of these papers focus on what I'm calling first moment effects. The basic idea is that they look at, you know, was there a surprise to the interest rate that the Fed set today? Or was there a surprise about the path of the interest rate that's coming in the next few months? But it's all about the first moment, the expected level of the interest rates. So in this paper, we want to ask, you know, what, what happens when you look at uncertainty around that path of the interest rate? Is that important as well? So, so the focus in this paper is, is on the second moment, the uncertainty around the expected path of the policy rate. So what do we do in this paper? The, the first contribution of our paper is to construct this new measure of monetary policy uncertainty using options data. As I mentioned, a lot of the literature so far is focused on first moments. They use futures data, treasury yield data, things like that. But using options can allow us to back out, you know, higher moments of the market expected distribution. And, and because these options are highly liquid and they're traded, you know, daily, our measure is also daily and then it can allow us to do some of this high frequency analysis. The second contribution of our paper is, is using this uncertainty measure from options data. We kind of show and explain how exactly the Fed's actions affect the market perceived uncertainty about future monetary policy. Today, I won't have too much time to go into all the details of what happens, but I'll give you a couple of examples of how specific Fed actions affect monetary policy uncertainty. And then finally, the last part of the paper is to try to understand that when there is a change in monetary policy uncertainty driven by Fed decisions, how does this affect asset prices? How does this affect the bond market, the stock market, the foreign exchange market? So that's kind of the main, main goal of our paper. And let me just give you a quick preview of, of the main findings. So we document what we call this FOMC uncertainty cycle, where the first part of is, of that is that on the day of the FOMC announcement, on average, you see uncertainty fall. And then I'll talk a little bit about why, why that might be. But we also see that after the FOMC announcement, in the days leading up to the next meeting, which happens about roughly a month and a half to that, uncertainty starts to gradually build up. In the paper, we have a explicit model that tries to tackle this. Today, I'll focus a bit more just on what happens on the day of the FOMC announcement and, and leave the, the drift to, to, for details in the model. Then what we find is that even though on average uncertainty falls, there is a lot of variation if you look at FOMC day by FOMC day. And we find that big changes in certainty are tied to forward guidance announcements. So when the Fed explicitly decides to change its language, I just gave you an example on, on the first slide. Those are days on which we see big movements in monetary policy uncertainty. And I'll give you some, a couple of specific examples too. And finally, we find that there are two transmission channels through which monetary policy uncertainty can affect financial markets. First is, there's this direct effect when there is a change in uncertainty that an increase in uncertainty tends to lower asset prices. But also the amount of uncertainty that you have leading into the announcement. So let's say we measured it the day before the announcement. That level of uncertainty also matters for the, how the first moment shocks, which we're calling policy surprises here, how they transmit to financial. So I'll give you a lot more detail about all of these. But we want to basically highlight that there is this, these two additional channels of monetary policy uncertainty that have been mostly ignored in the literature so far. So let me just start by giving you a quick word on how we measure uncertainty. So what we're interested in is effectively this conditional variance of standard deviation. So let's think about the interest rate L tau periods ahead. We want the variance of that interest rate conditional on information up to time t. And that's going to be our measure of short rate uncertainty. And in the paper, we show that there is a straightforward way to measure this from options data. And specifically, we use options on euro-dollar futures. So if you don't know any of these details, you want to think about our short rate uncertainty effectively as a VIX-like measure, where of course the VIX is, is the uncertainty about the S and P 500. So you want to think about the short rate uncertainty as uncertainty about the short-term interest rate. And in the paper, we talk a little bit about why our preferred approach is, is, we think superior to some of these alternatives. Two caveats before I kind of get into the results. One is that these are euro-dollar futures where the underlying asset is LIBOR. It's not quite the Fed funds rate. And so there are a couple of years specifically around financial crisis where the LIBOR OAS spread is elevated. So we make sure to exclude that in all our analysis. But for rest of the period, it's pretty stable and, and so it's, it's, from our perspective, it is okay to, to use these euro-dollar options. And then the second point is that we're measuring the risk neutral uncertainty, which basically means that we're going to measure both the quantity and the price of uncertainty, which includes this potentially time varying variance risk premium. But this is kind of the common approach that's used in, in event studies. All right, so here's what our measure looks like. And you can see that there is kind of variation in this throughout our sample. Maybe I'll just point to one particular instance that, that's notable, which is that when the zero lower bound hits in late 2008, which is marked here with the gray shaded areas, we see that uncertainty about the future rate doesn't really fall that much. And, and this is reflecting this idea. And and this is reflecting this idea that in the early parts of the zero bound, there was still the expectation that the Fed will lift off interest rates within a few months. Now, of course, we know that they stayed in the zero lower bound for quite a few years. Uh, and what we find is that, in fact, uncertainty about staying at the zero lower bound didn't really decrease a lot until twenty ten, twenty eleven. And I'll point out another on the next slide, something else about that. But what we're going to do now is take our daily measure, which is the short rate uncertainty. And we're going to look at what happens to this measure uh, on the day of the FOMC announcement. So so any changes in the short rate uncertainty on the day of the FOMC announcement, we're going to call monetary policy uncertainty with the idea that it's mostly responding to the FOMC announcement. So now what I'm showing you is what we're calling monetary policy uncertainty, which is the change in this short rate uncertainty on FOMC announcement days. So here you can see that on average, we see that uncertainty falls, what we call this resolution of uncertainty. But as but as you can also see, there are, there's a lot of variation meeting by meeting. So some meetings, it falls a lot, some meetings it goes up. Okay, so to to give you an example, uh, this big drop is the August twenty eleven FOMC meeting. This is the first time that the FOMC introduced calendar-based forward guidance. So previous to this meeting, the FOMC had been saying that they'll keep interest rates low for some time or an extended period of time. And in this particular meeting, they changed the language to say that they'll keep interest rates low at least until mid twenty thirteen. So the specific calendar-based forward guidance reduced uncertainty a lot. Another kind of interesting example is this one in early nineteen ninety five. This is actually when the for the first time, the Fed actually mentioned an explicit target for the Fed funds rate. And this seems to have lowered uncertainty about, you know, what the Fed funds rate is going to be. And and in the paper, we talk about a lot of other examples of how forward guidance is tied to these specific changes. Okay, so next, what we want to do is we want to think about what is the transmission of this uncertainty to financial markets? And what we're going to do is use your what are typical event study regressions. Effectively, again, the idea is that you focus in on a narrow window around the FOMC announcement. And in that narrow window, you calculate some measure of a monetary policy surprise. Typically, this would be changes in the Fed funds futures rate or the euro-dollar futures rate, or say, the one-year or the two-year treasury yield. That would be your monetary policy shock measure or MP surprise, if you will. And then you can regress any other asset on that. So this would be stock prices, long-term bond yields, exchange rate, et cetera, et cetera. Okay, so what we're going to do to that normal conventional regression is basically just add our monetary policy uncertainty measure. So beta two will tell us what is the added effect once you control for monetary policy surprise? What is the added effect of a change in uncertainty on asset prices? And and we say, and and we're going to make this point in the paper that even if you are not necessarily interested in the effect of monetary policy uncertainty, we still think it's important to include it in the suppression because, in fact, in the data, there is a high correlation and a positive correlation between monetary policy surprise and monetary policy uncertainty. In other words, quickly showing you this figure, there is a positive correlation between the first moment and the second moment changes. And because of this positive correlation, if you exclude MPU from this regression, you're going to get, you're going to bias this coefficient upwards, and we'll show that, I I'll show show that to you in the next table also. Okay, so two 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 important reasons to include that here. And then finally, um, we we also think that the level of uncertainty, so now this is not MPU, which is the change, but just what the short rate uncertainty level is the day before the FOMC announcement, so sometime before that, we're referring to this as T minus one. And we want to see what effect that has on the transmission of the first moment monetary policy shock. So these are the interest regressions we're interested in. So let me just show you one specific regression that we run, which is the regressing the ten-year US government treasury yield on on the shock. So in the first column, which I'm showing you, we just put MPS. This is the typical event study regressions that people would run. And in parentheses, we have t-statistics. And as has been documented in the literature, this shows that there is this strong statistically significant effect where a contractionary monetary policy shock raises ten-year treasury yields. So this has been well done. Now, in the second column, I'm going to add our MPU measure. And first of all, we see that it's got a positive coefficient, so an increase in uncertainty raises treasury yields is statistically significant. But also, we see that the coefficient on MPS falls substantially because of this positive correlation between MPS and FPU. And then finally, in in the last column, I'm going to include this interaction between the ex-ante level of uncertainty and the monetary policy surprise. And we get a negative coefficient, which means that when uncertainty about interest rates is high, it tends to dampen the effect of the first moment shock on asset prices, in this particular case, treasury bonds. And and in just the a couple of slides, I'll I'll explain the logic to you if I have time. Okay, but in the paper, we run a bunch of regressions that I'm showing you here, and you find similar effects uh, on the stock market, on VIX, which is uncertainty about the stock market, on the dollar index. We get kind of strong results throughout the financial markets. So let me try to, in the two minutes that I have left, just give you some intuition about what's going on behind this transmission mechanism. So first, what explains the direct effect of uncertainty on asset prices? And here we think that this explanation, for example, that's been put forth by Hans and Stein amongst others, is that it has a monetary policy has an effect on the risk premium. Okay, so let me quickly try to explain to you why that is. So here, if you look at the excess return uh on an asset, we know that it depends on the covariance between the stochastic discount factor and the return, but also on the standard deviation of the return on the asset itself. Right? So you're going to think about this as essentially the uncertainty about, in this case, just the one period ahead return, but it can be H period ahead. So if MPU affects this uncertainty about the return, then that's going to increase the excess return, i.e. the risk premium. Or in the case of treasury bonds, that would be the term premium. So we document that effect by effectively now regressing in from the finance literature measures of these term premiums on from bond rates and show that FPU has this positive effect by increasing uncertainty about the return. It increases the risk premium. So so we think that's there's this clear risk-based channel through which monetary policy uncertainty affects asset prices. We also want to highlight the second point, which is that even if you're not interested in MPU itself, you want to include it because otherwise it's going to bias your effects of the the what the first moment shock will do. And and then finally, the third result that we had was that when uncertainty is high, it attenuates the effect of first moment shocks. And in the in the model, we have this simple, in the sorry, in the paper, we have the simple model where, you know, agents are doing a signal extraction problem. And effectively, as as you might think intuitively, that when a signal from the Fed is less informative, i.e. when uncertainty is high, markets are going to pay less attention to it, i.e. they're going to react less to to first moment surprises. Okay, so I'm almost out of time, so let me conclude quickly. Which is that in this paper, we create this new measure of monetary policy uncertainty. And and we document that it uncertainty falls on FOMC announcement days and then gradually kind of goes up over time. But that there is kind of an important effect that the words that the FOMC chooses that has on this market perceived uncertainty. And then finally, that uncertainty transmit to transmits to financial asset prices through these two channels that that we've documented. So let me let me.
Thank you very much, Amit, perfectly in time. So we have time like for only a few questions, so let me let me ask two questions. First to Timo. So you find you find the evidence of state dependence responses. And and then my question is, you know, how much of it can be attributed to state-dependent pricing? And how much could come from some, you know, other nonlinearities like, you know, the marginal cost being very nonlinear? For example, how can you disentangle those two, those two possible channels? That's that's one. And then for Amit, perhaps. So so I'm wondering, you know, how macro uncertainty interact with with the uncertainty about about monetary policy? And in particular, is is it the case, I mean, could you look at, you know, when you see like that there is some resolution of uncertainty after an announcement? Is that thing, you know, is it like more effective if the macro is itself more uncertain or less effective when the macro is more uncertain, you know? Is there a way to kind of look at basically correlation between the sizes of your bars and, you know, some other measures of a more macro uncertainty? Yeah, Timo, if you want to start?
Sure. So a great question. Thank you very much. There are two things I would I would say to this. The first is, um, we 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 clearly say that this is a minimal test for state-dependent pricing, right? We we don't like want to attribute that everything there out there is due to state-dependent pricing at all. We just say, okay, look, if you believe in this world, then that's what we should see. That's what we see. I think that's the limitation that we have with respect to aggregate data, and that's why these micro-studies have a lot of merit, right? Because you can more clearly disentangle here. But for us, it was really just a question, okay, if this is true, then do we see something similar in the aggregate data? And and we do. And the second thing that I would probably reply to this is also, we we do check for for, you know, certain, you know, in the robustness analysis, we, for example, say, okay, what about when you try to to put in a a proxy for financial friction such as Gilchrist's psychologic index and things like that? And and the results hold up to that, and we we also tested with other shocks. So, yeah, it's it comes to, at the end of the day, I agree, it comes down to how much do you believe this story? But at the end of the day, we also never, we 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 clearly say, guys, that will be my reply. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks. Thanks for the question. So if you don't mind, I can just quickly show you. Sorry, I guess it's not working right now for some reason. But yeah, we have a backup slide where we show what the correlation of our uncertainty measures is with macro uncertainty measures. So for example, with this economic policy uncertainty measure that's quite popular, it turns out that our measure is quite low, has quite low correlation with that in general. But you had another question about whether the amount of macro uncertainty on FOMC announcement days matters. And there there we tried something and we didn't find anything statistically significant. We tried a bunch of measures, most of them didn't show anything statistically significant. I think one of them did a little bit. But but yeah, uh, in in general, um, I just want to mention one last point, which is that, you know, short rate uncertainty that we calculate in general is uncertainty about interest rates. So built into that is also uncertainty about macro variables. And and what we focus on in the paper is just changes on FOMC announcement days, which we assume that you know, uncertainty about GDP or inflation doesn't change much on the day of the FOMC announcement, but it's all coming from the Fed. But but those are very valid questions.
Thank you very much. Okay, so I suggest we move to the second part of the session, and there's no easy transition between the two parts, so I won't try to 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 make any. So let's let's start with Arthur Blain from University of Toronto. Arthur, please.
Full screen. Here we go. Is that, you can see that? Okay, that's. Yeah, so thank you for inviting me to the session. I'm I'm excited to be able to tell you about this paper, Culture and Contract. So. Okay, so the the paper is about institutions and colonial institutions in particular, and this is a pretty big literature, starting with Samuel Blue Johnson and Robinson in two thousand and one, who showed that colonial extractive institutions have been really harmful for economic development. Loz and Montero have more recent work on this as well. And the way that the literature has gone is is to try to delve into which institutions are in particular had different types of effects. So there's some evidence from Dell and Okin that there were institutions that were very clearly extractive, that in the long run ended about having positive development impacts because of making making connections and building roads. And so this is a paper that is looking into one type of institution. In particular, we're looking at dividing rule. There's a policy that featured pretty prominently in just about every single major colonial system and has been thought to have really big and lasting impacts on social cohesion in particular, and through that channel on economic development. So this paper is going to try to measure ethnic attitudes in East Africa to try to see if if dividing rule in that region had an impact on social cohesion. And then to try to link that up with some measure of of economic outcomes to the best that 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 we can do. So, sorry. So this is all happening in Rwanda and Burundi. Rwanda and Burundi are, it's about ninety-five percent of each of the of the countries is made up of either Hutu or Tutsi. There's a long history of animosity between the Hutu and the Tutsi in Rwanda. There was a genocide in ninety-four. There's been ongoing ethnic violence in Burundi in the post-colonial era. And the idea is to kind of see if some of these ethnic attitudes can be linked back to to colonial policies, as as has been hypothesized in some other fields. So I'm going to look at one institution in particular. In nineteen thirty-one, the Belgians introduced quotas. So the idea was that they wanted to try to integrate the region into some sort of monetary economy and away from barter and and production for consumption, these kinds of things, because that was going to facilitate taxation. And so they started by trying to to they they took kind of a a carrot approach at first and tried to encourage the production of of export crops, which would necessitate them, the 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 farmers kind of integrating into a monetary economy. That didn't work so well. So in nineteen thirty-one, they introduced these export quotas. And the coffee quota in particular is interesting because it was uniform throughout the country. So every village had to meet this coffee quota. And not every village in in the country is equally suited to to growing coffee. So the way that the coffee quota worked was that the Tutsi chief, so every every chief of every region at the time was was Tutsi. The Tutsi were favored by by the colonists. So every Tutsi chief was required to recruit Hutu farmers and Hutu coffee farmers in particular into forced labor in order to meet these these coffee quotas. So the idea was that if they didn't meet the quotas, then they they would get whipped by the, they they have these like hippo hide whips by the Belgian colonists. And if the if the Hutu farmers were not complying, then then they would get whipped by the the Tutsi chiefs. And so the idea in the paper is to try to look at the ease with which a particular region could satisfy the coffee quotas by looking at the returns to producing coffee relative to the the returns to producing other types of crops. So we're going to exploit whether or not the quotas were a binding constraint. And in some regions, they would have been binding, and in those regions, we would expect more forced labor. And in regions where the quotas are not binding and it's a really heavily coffee-growing region, anyway, you would not have to recruit people into forced labor in order to meet the the quotas. And so you would get this variation in the threat of punishment based on the quotas. So we're going to look at ancestral soil characteristics that hindered coffee production. We're going to see if those are associated with differences in ethnic attitudes and economic agreements today. Just one note on that on the quotas. So the policy was implemented in nineteen thirty-one. Between twenty-five and thirty-one, you had these like carrot-based efforts to to incentivize export production. You can see that those didn't really gain much traction, but once they implemented these quotas in thirty-one, this blue line is the, can you guys, you guys can see my cursor, maybe I'm just, yeah, so this this blue line kind of explodes. And we see, yeah, okay. And it happens at the expense of these subsistence crops. So the 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 solid lines here are export crops, and the dashed lines are subsistence crops. Maze and maniac are the the two that that seem to have kind of been substituted away from as more land was allocated to coffee. Okay, so data. So there's a number of pieces of data that need to kind of come together here. I need information on ethnic attitudes. That's going to come from the trust game. So we went to. uh, ethnic attitudes. That's going to come from the trust game. So um, we went to went to Rwanda and Burundi and collected uh, data in the field from almost nine hundred Hutu and Tutsi farmers across a hundred and forty-three villages. Every one of them played the trust game uh, against a, a stranger who is from a different village. The way this worked was, we'd go into a district center. The vans would go out to like four or five uh, villages that were about half an hour away from, from the district center. Uh, they would, they would bring them in and then we would get people to play uh, the trust game against each other. Uh, who were from villages that were about an hour away from each other. And so these are strangers who had never met and they sit down and play face to face. And the idea is to uh, see, we, we didn't prime ethnicity at all or anything like that. We just randomly partnered people up and relied on the fact that the Hutu and Tutsi uh, at, at least stereotypically look uh, there, there's like a stereotypical look about them and, and that's a signal of ethnicity and body language can play a role, dress can play a role, etc. So, so we, we relied on these kind of visual cues that people would kind of understand that they were in an interethnic relationship or not. And then X post uh, just kind of measured whether or not that, that indeed was an inter-relationship or not. Um, and so the idea is to say, do people with a family history of forced labor use ethnicity as a rule of thumb to indicate the trustworthiness of the person that they're sitting down with? And in order to do that, we need their family histories. We need to understand whether their ancestors were uh, exposed to this, this forced labor policy. And so to do that, there's this module uh, where we collected uh, as detailed as we could. Um, family histories for each of these peoples. This includes migration history going back several generations as well as information on uh, what their parents and grandparents, um, what kind of agricultural activities they were involved with. We're going to link in particular the migration history. Uh, so this is typically the location uh, where the parents were born. So this is the linking to the uh, the location that the grandparents would have been living in. We're going to link that location to GIS data on the suitability of coffee as well as every other crop. And then match that up to archival price data, which uh, is going to give us some sense of the possible returns uh, to coffee relative uh, to every other crop. And based on that, we're going to try to get a sense of how binding these uh, coffee quotas would have been in the ancestral uh, hometown of, of each of our respondents. So this is the data. Uh, on the left, we have the respondent that, that the locations of uh, of the respondents, you can see kind of it's, it's clustered. So we would have, this would have been like kind of one district over here that we would have gone into. And then our, our vans would have kind of gone into these surrounding clusters. Um, on the, on the did I say, on the left? So on the, on the right here, we have the uh, grandparent locations. Uh, for the most part, these are grandparent locations. So, so we have like the historical locations of, of these people's families. Uh, and I've overlaid that on uh, whether or not we expect there would have been forced labor or not forced labor in those regions. So it, it was like a mountain range that kind of comes down uh, the, the west side of Rwanda and Burundi. You need elevation to be able to grow coffee. And so these are coffee uh, suitable regions where we don't expect that forced labor would have been required to, to meet the quotas. And then over here, you have these regions that are less well-suited to coffee and uh, more forced labor would have been required to. Um, okay, so the empirical strategy is going to look at the, I have, I have like ten minutes, is that right? Um, sorry, I should have kept a better eye on that. Ten minutes, okay. So the empirical strategy is going to uh, look at the relationship between the costliness of allocating land to coffee and contemporary ethnic attitudes. So this is going to be the main variable here on the x-axis that, that I'm going to look at. I'm going to look at the returns to the best crop that's not coffee. So I'm taking like, I'm computing based on the pretend, how, how much you can grow, how much of whichever crop you can grow on an acre. Uh, and multiplying that by the, the price at the time and then dividing that that measure. So I'm taking the maximum of that variable and dividing that by the same measure for coffee. And so what you're getting is that in this region uh, to the left of the line, these are regions that are really good for, for coffee. Uh, and in the, these regions, you're getting uh, that coffee is not so good. So in, because in the paper, there's a number of uh, kind of ways that the separation is made. This is just kind of allowing for the, 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 the data to, to pick out the largest kink in, in the data. It, it ends up putting it like right around one. One would be the point at which coffee is, is produces returns that are equivalent to the next best crop. So this is like the threshold at which coffee uh, becomes no longer the best crop that you can grow. And right around that, that time, you see this uh, increase in forced labor. So this is forced labor on the, on the left-hand side. Um, so we're going to exploit this relationship between the, the soil characteristics and the forced labor to see if the same kind of nonlinear uh, relationship exists when we look at the trust data. And then when we look at these economic outcomes, which I'll, uh, which I'll talk about later. We can do this in a number of, of different ways. I, maybe I should have written down the specific, there's a lot of kind of robust and stuff in the paper, but I, I'm going to show you the, just like simple diff and diff results, which is just to say, are the ethnic attitudes in this area worse than in this area? Um, we should expect that that should be true only for the Hutu. The Hutu were the only ones who were eligible for forced labor. There were Tutsi who were uh, farmers as well, but the, the Tutsi were, were not eligible for forced labor. Uh, and in any case, all of the uh, chiefs at the time were Tutsi, so you wouldn't get this uh, this ethnic animosity. Um, and so that sets up a, a kind of nice falsification test where we can say that for the Tutsi would, are they experiencing the same differences in uh, in, in attitudes and in trust or, or in the economic uh, agreements that we're going to look at? Uh, had they, i- if they're from a village where they would have been targeted for forced labor, had they been Tutsi. So everything about them is the same except their ethnicity. Um, and, and that's going to help to identify that it's the forced labor that's driving these things and not something that's kind of special about coffee farmers at that time. Okay, so the main thing that we're going to look at in the regression i- is to look at if you had a grandparent who was growing coffee in a region where these uh, where these constraints were likely binding, um, those are the people who would have been most exposed to the forced labor, most likely been exposed to the forced labor, and we should expect their uh, ethnic attitudes to potentially be worse if this kind of thing A fostering some ethnic animosity and B transmitted across generations. Okay, so preview of the results. I'll show you the table in the next slide, but uh, Hutu made trust game offers that were about twenty percent lower uh, than other Hutu from, so this is forced labor Hutu are, are people whose grandparents lived in a forced labor region and grew coffee. They, those would have been the people that were recruited into forced labor. They make much lower offers than other Hutu from the district. Uh, they're less likely to partner with Tutsi in a, in a lab game. So they're less cooperative across ethnic lines. Uh, both of X are nonlinear in the same way as forced labor. So you can do this in like a kink, like a regression kink design. I'm going to show you the, the difference of it. I mean, it doesn't matter. It's like almost exactly the same estimates. The Tutsi don't have the same pattern. So the Tutsi who would have been targeted, had they been Hutu, uh, they don't, we don't observe the same difference. If anything, the effect goes uh, in the opposite direction. Um, and the, the effect that I estimate is only showing up for Hutu trust of Tutsi. The Hutu, Hutu trust doesn't show up at all. So here we have the trust game offers uh, as the dependent variable. And here we're looking at the people who are randomly partnered into Hutu, Hutu, Tutsi trust games. We're seeing between twenty and twenty-five percent reductions in uh, the offers if their grandparents farmed coffee in regions where the quotas are thought to be binding. Uh, you can see that, so that these are both significant effects. If you look at the co-ethnic trust, so you look at the trust game uh, offers when a Hutu is partnered with another Hutu, you only see uh, you know, three or four percent uh, declines in the offers that they make, and that's not statistically significant. If you look at the same thing for the Tutsi, so these are the Tutsi who were partnered with a Hutu. So we're looking at the Tutsi offers to a Hutu. If anything, these are not significant, but if anything, you're seeing slightly uh, larger estimates here. And likewise, in the Tutsi, Tutsi relationships, these people who would have been targeted uh, for forced labor, had they been Hutu or if anything, making uh, higher offers to both Hutu and Tutsi across the board. Uh, economically meaningful uh, stuff. So I, I told you that we were going to look at some economic outcomes. So I collected information on these insurance agreements. So the reason why I focused on insurance was because that historically, the Hutu and Tutsi, like in the pre-colonial um, anthropologists think that the Hutu and Tutsi uh, commonly made these uh, it, it's like gift exchange type things, like insurance agreements. And the reason that these were typically done across ethnic lines were because the Hutu are uh, more typically agrarian and the Tutsi more pastoral. So uh, you, you get less correlated shocks uh, in that sense, and, and they're more able to ensure each other. So on average, we might expect that the Hutu and Tutsi will make good insurance partners. There's of course a trade-off. So on the one hand, that if you make these agreements across ethnic lines, because the, any shocks uh, may be less correlated than within ethnicity, they make good insurance partners. But on the other hand, if the trust is low, then when I go and, and you know, something bad happens to my, to my uh, to my crops and I expect some, some help, um, if the other, the other person is in a pretty, you know, good position to shirk and, and may not follow through. Uh, and so it's this trade-off that, that we're exploiting. We might expect that if the trust among the Hutu have suffered that fewer of these uh, inter-household insurance agreements uh, are taking place. And for the ones that are taking place, if the value of them is lower, then we might expect more default in those agreements. And so the evidence is consistent with this partner selection induced reductions in agricultural insurance, social, what that looks like. So on the one hand, this is just looking now at the number of these agreements that people make. So uh, people, the, the Hutu uh, who were uh, probably or, or more probably, I suppose, uh, targeted for forced labor are making fewer of these agreements. Uh, this is, this is statistically significant, but if you look at the Tutsi, if anything, again, they're making slightly more of these agreements. Again, that's not statistically significant. Um, this holds up, you know, this is different, the, the difference between one and three is these education and income control. I, I kind of varied those I, I added those separately because they're plausibly indigenous. Um, if you look at how they do on the agreements that they do make, so these are now uh, Hutu in column one, we have Hutu who actually do have some agreements that we can look at. And then what are the outcomes of those agreements? Uh, we're looking at, so experience default here means that you expected or you went and asked uh, for some help because something economically went wrong. And uh, the outcome here is whether or not, when you did go and ask for some help, did you uh, did you get what you expected? And so if not, we're considering that to be default and we're seeing uh, that there is significantly more default for the Hutu uh, in, in these agreements, but not for the Tutsi that holds up with controls as well. Uh, okay. So I think that the, I, I, I think that the paper makes um, two contributions to literature. One is by kind of following the literature and, and looking uh, more into specific policies and, and trying to find uh, heterogeneity in both the types of colonial policies that have led to poor economic development, as well as the mechanisms through which that, that happens. Um, and then the second thing that I think is, is kind of nice about the paper is that uh, it's in a relatively exogenous way linking uh, the inter-ethnic distrust to uh, economic outcomes. So there's quite a bit of uh, more aggregate literature that, that looks at, you know, why we think social capital or trust in particular is is important for economic development, but this uh, I think makes a nice link. Uh, that's been hard to find in micro studies. So this paper, this Flowers paper by John Hreepchert is one uh, that does, that does a good job to this, but um, actually there's not that much micro evidence that is doing this. And so this, I think, builds uh, on that literature that, that is, you know, still relatively sparse in its evidence. Thanks.
Thank you, Arthur. Very nice uh, presentation. Um, shall we now move to the last paper of the session? Michele Battisti from University of Glasgow.
Hello. Uh, I hope you can hear me. Please let me know.
We do.
Cannot hear me well. Um, so uh, last paper, even I think within this sub-session, I'm not sure it's so easy to make strong connections, strong links uh, between papers, but let me just thank the organizers for letting me uh, present here. Uh, it's not common that one presents a published paper. There's, I guess, pros and cons in, in doing that, um, as maybe the other presenters uh, think as well. So, this is a paper co-authored with Giovanni Perry, who's at UC Davis. And there was a typo. There's a typo on the program. It looks like I'm the one at UC Davis. He's the one at UC Davis instead. And then Niese Romiti was a stress client. That's also here, uh, here in Glasgow. What is this paper about? This paper is about, is within the economics of migration. It's very much an empirical paper in nature. And we look at the effect of co-ethnic networks. I'm going to explain what I mean by that on immigrants' economic success. So a bit of motivation uh, for this. So networks are important for immigrants. Uh, it is important for immigrants to um, interact with people from the same country of origin as they are. And in particularly in the German context, which is where our data comes from, there is quite a bit of evidence that shows that immigrants are attracted to locations with a higher share of people with similar backgrounds. And this is relevant economically, not because we also see that a lot of immigrants, in particular in Germany, find their jobs uh, through personal contacts, right? So who your contacts are affects the kind of job you have. And so if your contacts are very likely to be people from similar backgrounds that may affect the type of job that you get or whether you get a job or not. So among low skill, that percentage is higher. We kind of see uh, throughout the presentation that uh, things are a bit different for people with lower levels of education and people with higher levels of education. Looking at ethnic networks is also relevant, we think, because it is at least for asylum seekers, kind of a policy. It's, it's a policy measure to some extent. There's been discussion over the years of whether um, whether asylum seekers should be placed, should be free to choose where they live at the beginning, where they move into the country. Uh, or should they be a, so allocated in a particular way across locations? And does that matter? The, both of these things are not new, but we think that we uh, contribute to the literature a, a little bit uh, by looking at the effect of uh, co-ethnic networks on human capital investment. That's something that's been looked at um, very, very little before, uh, if at all. And also we look at the dynamic of effects. So rather than just taking a fixed amount of time, we're going to take co-ethnic networks at arrival as a fixed variable and then things, see how the effects of uh, that vary uh, over time. So, um, and I think that, that is uh, what I say here a little bit. Um, what I wanted to say is that we also have a very simple search model in the paper, which I don't think is what got us into the EJ. Um, but um, it, it, that's a little bit there. The idea there is basically that there's a trade-off between working and investing in human capital. And so basically a network will affect the chances of getting certain types of job and not others. And through that, it may affect the incentives to acquire uh, more human capital. And as I said before, we estimate the dynamic effects of size of initial network, that, that is, uh, that is something I want to define a bit more precisely when I talk about the data, uh, unemployment and human capital investment. We do a few things for identification, which I'm going to talk about in uh, two minutes. What is our data? Basically two sources of, of data here. We have um, a relatively recent, I guess not so recent anymore. Uh, um, survey of immigrants in Germany. It's called the EAB soap migration sample. And there we have information on country of birth, arrival years, yearly spells of human capital investment, employment, uh, human capital pre-migration and also job search methods in Germany and a few other things. So I, I guess, compared to many other surveys, it's quite nice to have some information pre-migration that's often not there uh, in similar surveys and is something that we can use to some extent. We then are able to merge this survey to the full registry data in Germany that has the full labor market history of each individual in, in Germany. In principle, we use, we use for most of what we do, we use uh, immigrants only. Which means that despite the fact that the, the survey um, only has relatively recent way, for the immigrants who came earlier, we have their full labor market history in Germany that may be fifteen, twenty years for some of them. How do we construct our network measure, which is How do we construct our network measure, which is our? Main measure that I'm going to call NTW, that's a bit ugly, I guess. NTW CD zero. So that's a network. Of origin C. In district D zero. So for each individual, an individual I arrives in Germany. And the first district where we see this individual is district D zero. For that district. We basically calculate the share. Of people from the same origin C. I don't call it country because for smaller countries, we we aggregate them. It's not exactly country. So that number of people has a share of total district employment, right? So that is the importance of that particular county of origin. In that district, there's four hundred and something districts in Germany out of total employment. So that's a relatively coarse measure of network. This is not necessarily who you know, it's more local labor market level. What is our baseline empirical specification here? So the main outcome, Y I T for individual I. This is somebody who arrived in district D zero. I just said that. And typically, the outcomes are going to be employment, human capital investment, but we also look at language, for example. I'm going to show you results on language. Towards the end. So that outcome, we're gonna regress that outcome on a set of individual characteristics. This is a bit richer than than other. Than other similar studies, because we have pre migration characteristics there as well. And then crucially, we look at the effect of the static effect of network, but we then also interact. Networks with years since migration. So we allow the effect of network, and this is network. Of the initial district. So this is initial network, network of arrival, that's fixed. But then we look at whether the effect of network of 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 arrival on our outcome varies depending on years since migration. And then we're able, we we play around with fixed effects in the paper. I'm not going to bore you with that too much. The basic specification that we have here has a set of district of arrival, fixed effects. Year of arrival, fixed effects and country of origin, fixed effects. What do we do for identification? This is clearly not an experimental setup. So we have to be worried about the endogenity of those networks, meaning that people are going to look for particular networks at arrival that are going to be. Particularly say useful to them in some sense for in a labor market sense. So there's a few things we can do in the paper to try to address this endogenity, this endogenous sorting, which is the main threat to identification here. We control for a set of pre migration observables, employment, experience in the labor market, education and language proficiency before arrival, and we can. Can you still see what I'm seeing? Okay, it went away from me for a second, sorry. We're able to actually test orthogonality, this is this third point here. To test orthogonality within this, between these pre migration characteristics and the initial network. In order to evaluate the role of this potential sorting, we then also use these pre migration observables as controls in that part of that X I T. That I that I showed you before. We're also able to control for country of origin, district and year fixed effects. Plus, we use the full labor market data to. Estimate two way fixed effects, meaning country of origin by district, district by year and year by country of origin. And then what we also do, sort of, you know, if you didn't believe any of this so far, to some extent, we restrict our analysis to. Not all refugees, but to a particular sample of of refugees and actually Germans that enter in this period. For which there is a relatively strict procedure on initial allocation. That depends on quotas based on regional GDP, basically, a regional population that. Should alleviate all of the main concerns about the initial choices. These immigrants are really not choosing where they settle at the beginning. Let me move to results. The main results are in tables in the paper, but I should, I thought maybe, given the little time we have, I just put some charts, maybe it's, you know. Given that it's so hard to keep level of attention high on Zoom, I find, maybe that's a little bit lighter than than looking at tables. So this is where, this is on, this is where our outcome is employment, right? So network of arrival and employment. So this is. The effect, these are betas clearly of those coefficient of those of the regression I've showed you, and this is years since migration. So what we see is that there tends to be a positive effect of network size. So the individuals that move into locations. That when arriving in Germany, living locations with the larger share of people from the same region of origin, they can, they are more likely to work. Condition on everything as we control for. We can see that the effect is actually relatively large, about between seven and eight percentage points. At the beginning, but the effect really disappears and becomes statistically significant, actually pretty close to zero after a few years. Right? And when we look at the same regression that has instead human capital investment. As a dependent variable, we kind of find the opposite pattern. The the individuals that. Arrive in Germany in a larger network are less likely to invest in human capital. Our little model kind of, you know, describes this trade off a little bit, that, you know, network will help you get employment quickly, but through that will also. Disincentivize human capital investment. Then the, one of the main concerns with with identification is that. Some places that have these larger networks are are sort of economically different, maybe economically better, more attractive, or maybe less than others. Right? And so we think that one of the main thing that 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 we did, that we were quite happy, worked very well is. We run a version of our regression where instead of building the network. Using the people from the same country of origin as individual I, we use the share coming from all of the other countries excluding own country. As as the main explanatory variable, with the idea that if that still had an effect, that would be worrisome, because it would say that this. Maybe locations that are just are going to be more conducive to employment of immigrants in general. And so while these column here, so column one and three, give the. Kind of the same information as the as the charts, although they group together years since migration a little bit more, but. This is the basic, the major idea. So short term positive effect on employment, short term negative effect on human capital investment. Once we use these placebo networks instead, we find nothing there. Oh, wow. I cannot really draw very well here. So we don't find that those effects are there at all, right? This is of course no test. Of what we do, but it's kind of suggested that there is something about what's happening at the at the level of the of the country. So in order to kind of kill our story, I guess what's nice about presenting a published paper is that you can, you know. Be very, very open about potential issues. I think, you know, the story that will kill this has to be at the county level, right? So that if that. Particular region is particularly attractive only to Italians, then that. That has nothing to do with network size, just characteristics of the demand, for example, in the labor market. That's what will be problematic for our results. But any story that's kind of saying some places are just more attractive for immigrants. I think is taken care of quite well by this placebo result that we do. Referees are very useful sometimes. This is one example. We didn't have this in the paper. And one of our referees pointed out that that we should look at this, and we could actually in our data. So it was all on us that we had not done that before. So we, as a possible channel, that, you know, I discussed incentives on on human capital investment that was basically schooling. In our data, but we also have information on language. And so what we can do here is. Run our regression that has as dependent variable. The current proficiency in German language, by current, I mean at the time of the survey. So this is two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen. We don't have language, we didn't have information on on language proficiency for every year. We have it at the time of the survey, but the survey also asked about. Language knowledge, so German knowledge at the time of arrival, which we include here as a control, okay? And clearly, not surprisingly, that's a very strong effect, very strong correlation between. Your level of German when you arrived in Germany and the level of German at the time of the survey. What, when we include our network measure, we find that especially for writing. And speaking, though the effect is there, just not significant. For reading, we tend to find a negative effect. So it seems that indeed larger networks make it a little bit harder to. Improve your German skills, which I guess is. Kind of straightforward when you think about it, but but that suggests possible mechanism that's going to make. Some of these immigrants may be a little bit less competitive in the labor market at large. Compared to immigrants that still, that also have the same level of of years in Germany, so the same level of experience, but they were exposed to. A more, a more mixed network at the beginning. Having said that. This is purely empirical, and so we don't really talk about welfare at all. In the paper, and we're absolutely unable to do that. So what I mean is that here clearly. Networks are very good for employment short term, and that is certainly. A a helpful effect, and that there's no way for us in our analysis to trade, to make a quantitative trade off between that and the potential long term. Negative effect. So I think I have about three, four minutes, so that's quite good. Maybe I could have spoken a little bit slower even. Summary of results. So we find that larger initial immigrant networks or co ethnic networks, we call them. Just because we don't use exactly country of origin. For most immigrants, this is country of origin. Lead to more reliance on personal contacts. This is a result I didn't show you directly. But we actually have the question in the survey of whether you found your first job through friends. Or personal contacts, and you do find an effect on network there, which is kind of a test of. That things kind of make sense, that our our mechanism is actually there. The our main results that larger networks at arrival increase the probability of employment and decrease human capital investment. For newly arrived immigrants, both effects disappear around five, six years since arrival, both of them. And the effects, I didn't have time to show you this, but it's in the paper, I primarily, actually exclusively, pretty much. Driven by individuals with lower levels of education before coming to Germany. This is kind of consistent with the fact that people with higher levels of education are much less likely to use networks to find jobs in the first place. To use personal networks, right? You know, if I was looking for a job in another. University in the UK, it's unlikely that the that the share of Italians in that particular town is going to be particularly. Helpful to me looking for an academic job. For different jobs, it is different. And this this result kind of shows this. And we also find direct effects on language. So individuals starting. In larger networks have, tend to have lower proficiency of German language, especially in speaking. After. After a few years. I think that's all, no, that's, I'm sure for my colleagues, quite a bit more in the paper, but hopefully. That was still a useful overview. So thank you very much. Thanks a lot for listening.
Thank you very much, Michele. So you're right on time. Good to know that sometimes referees can be useful. I I. I share this with you. So perhaps I have a a question to throw. So what about like, you know, potential spatial sorting of the Uthus farmers, meaning that. So so do you find any different behavior of those who are still in the village of their grandparents and those who have moved, you know? Perhaps some people are more, you know, inclined to accept. More to accept domination and therefore they are perhaps more inclined to trust their masters. I mean, have you looked at that or? Don't you have enough data for that?
Yeah, so, okay, so. The. Okay, so within a generation, migration is extremely low in these regions. There's most of the migration. That's taking place is going from like rural areas into Kigali or into Bojumura, that the capitals of of each place. And because we're surveying farmers in the paper, those people don't show up in the sample. So the the level of migration in the sample within a generation is extremely low. What it does happen, it's typically for marriage to take place. And there is quite a bit of. Really. Kind of short distance migration for the for the purposes of 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 marriage. And because of that, the the migration that happens over generations is actually, you know, relatively high, but it's not like they're not moving long distances. The paper is, because it includes. The current location fixed effects is identifying an effect off of those people who are who have moved. For the most part, and so it's it's kind of hard to to disentangle and affect the people who stay versus moved, because it's just kind of absorbed by the fixed effect. So. No, I agree. So I think that, I think that's. Definitely interesting, but I think that it's kind of beyond the scope of of what we can do with the with the specification.
Okay, so maybe another question, which which is, I guess, a bit obvious, but if you if you. If you correlate like the the outcome of the trust game with like the recent, you know, violence is in. I mean, perhaps many, run that, do you, I mean, is that like? Big time bigger than 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 the effect you find, I mean.
Okay, so, okay, so this is getting like into the weeds of the paper. So so. It is court, so there is a correlation between between the forced labor and the, it it's hard to do it. With my, so if you do it, kind of, you can, you don't need. The sample to to do that, you can, I mean. The violence data we have and the forced labor data we have, and you can do that for the whole country. And if you do that, it shows up. Within the sample, if you want to do some sort of like IV type thing in the sample, which. Maybe lots of reasons why you might not want to do that IV. But if you did it, it it doesn't show up as precisely because. On purpose, I surveyed in locations that had a history of genocide in Rwanda. And the reason that I did that is it's really difficult to get ethnicity information. You're not allowed to prime ethnicity and even. Mention it in in most cases unless you have an extremely good reason. And we were able to kind of make inferences about ethnicity without doing that, but only conditional on the fact that these people had a history of exposure to the genocide. There's like a government program that gives reparations to. To to Tutsi on the basis of. Like just as kind of a recovery effort from the genocide. And so if we we ask people if they're eligible for that program. You're, you could be not eligible for the program either because you're a Hutu or because you don't live in a genocide region. So to shut down that kind of latter channel, we only surveyed genocide regions. And so you're only getting like the intensive margin. Difference. And because you're kind of losing some of that variation, you still get. A very similar estimate within the sample, but it it becomes no longer significant. But if you do it on the broader sample, which is kind of like a different. Question altogether, it does show up. I haven't written that paper yet, but it's, I mean, that's something that you could you could look at, yeah.
Okay, thanks for that. To Michele, there are some questions.
I actually ask Arthur a quick one. Fantastic paper. I really enjoyed enjoyed the presentation. More of a curiosity, because I guess it's a bit out there, the question. So you mentioned very rightly that you need these things to matter and you need these things to be passed down from generation to generation, because we're talking about two generation difference here. Have you learned through the project anything about how they get passed down? In some sense, you know, it's it's kind of a non economic question, but it matters because it also. Maybe this is something about whether this is primarily about trust, or this is even much broader than trust. You would think that there's like. General dislike, I guess, or any more, any sort of negative feeling might be there. You pick up trust, which is of course super important economically, but there may be others, and they may be, whether, you know, how many others, I guess, depends on. How these things really get passed down from generation to generation.
Yeah, so. Yeah, so there's a big question. So I guess one thing that I I can speak to a little bit is we, I tried things to look at whether this is. The the kind of historical location on the mother's side versus the father's side. And it the effect is much stronger through the father's side. So there's a couple of things. So the region is paternalist, paternalistic culturally. And so you might expect more intergenerational transmission through the fathers. The other thing is that just culturally, it's it's much more likely that the fathers would have been the ones who were who were kind of exposed to this historically. And and so. You might expect kind of the initial animosity to to be more more strong there. And so it's, it it. I mean, there's two things. One is like. Was the father or the mother more exposed? And kind of did it exist to be passed down across generations more for one than the other? Or is it that? Things transmit on the father's side more easily than the mother's side? And I can't, I don't think I can, I don't. I don't have good, good ideas about how to tease that out, but I mean, that I guess the broad answer to the question, which may not be all that interesting, is is the effect is much stronger when you look at it through the paternalistic and the maternalistic side. But I I'm not sure how much. I would kind of read into that as as being an informative. I would kind of read into that as as being informative of transmission mechanisms.
Great, thank you.
Thanks. So we have really, I've been running out of time, so just have a couple of minutes. So maybe, so you you got some questions, Michele, so I'll 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 send you the questions because they're
Yeah, I see them. I can see them.
Okay, you see that.
So that's a question, maybe other people cannot see them. So there's two questions. So thanks a lot for those who
Just 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 pick up one and and
I'll pick up, I'll pick up both because they're super quick.
Okay.
So one is on wages. So very sensible question. We find negative effects, negative short term effects on wages, but pretty imprecisely measured. So most of them are not significant, but that's about precision rather than size. So the effect is there. And then another question is on further migration, right? So further mobility and that how that affects things. So in some sense, we don't want to look at that in the sense that we fix network at arrival, but of course, some of these people may be moving, and that may be the reason why why these effects are not there in the longer, in the the long term. It's true. We don't want to include it as a control because it's very much indogenous whether you decide to move somewhere else. But we see if we use mobility as an outcome, we don't see that much, right? So mobility is not as 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 correlated as with the with our measure of network as you as you may think. That's all I have to say.
All right. So so thank you very much to the four of you for your time. I think, and thank you for being submitted your work at some point to to the AJ in the past. I mean, I have been very interested by the session, so I think it's a great showcase of what we do at AJ, and perhaps it's a good way to attract other good papers to to the journal. Thank you very much. And have a good day.
Thank you. Thanks for organizing.
Yep.
Bye.
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 Thanks for your time. Bye.